And having no other further public comment, we'll move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that council votes on the motion unless members of the city council, staff, or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. We have any public comment on the consent calendar items?
None received.
Nothing. All right. Any suggestions or emotion?
Through the mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to approve the consent calendar, items four through 15.
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to remove item eight for discussion, please.
Okay.
So, items four through 15, less item number eight.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve the consent calendar, items four through 15, minus number eight, which will be removed for separate discussions. All those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
And opposed, passes. And move on to number eight, sir.
Through the mayor, thank you. Through the process of working with the Budget Ad-Hoc Committee, currently, the city of Uba City is paying approximately $52,000 for economic development aid, if you will. Approximately $25,000 through the local EDC and another $27,000 through the Greater Sacramento Economic Council membership. While I'm not specifically in opposition to signing an agreement with GSEC, the Greater Sacramento Economic Council, I'm concerned that the two organizations are not operating in sync. It certainly has come to my attention that both agencies seem to have a communication problem. I have not validated that myself, but it's certainly come to me from several different avenues. I also believe that there are issues in regards to the two presentations. One was the presentation by Mr. Broome, and the other was the SEDS document that was presented to us, and that there may be some concern on both parties about the validity of the information contained in both. As we move forward and move away from, you know, hopefully, the efforts that we've put forth through the budget, which we should wrap up in September, I think it's prudent for this council to take a deeper dive into the expenditure of this $52,000, just to make sure that our expectations for what we're getting, i.e. our return on our investment, is validated by the amount of money that we're spending. We are in tough economic times, and I have a deep concern that we are getting what we should be able to be getting from the Economic Council and the EDC. And I know that the mayor is on the board for the GSEC, and I know Councilwoman Espendola is on for the EDC, and perhaps that's, you know, the two of you can get together and discuss whatever is or isn't happening between the two organizations. But as a council, I think it's an item that bears more scrutiny. Like I said, I'm not here to spend the citizens' money without knowing what I'm getting for it, and right now, I'm not sure what we're getting for that. That's just my opinion.
Thank you for that.
Through the mayor, thanks, Vice Mayor Boomgarden. I think your concerns and areas are valid. They're fair statements. I do like to share that we have had a meeting. The mayor asked to schedule a meeting, and I was included in that meeting, you know, because of the Brown Act. We have rules that we follow. So, we were in that meeting with Brenda and our city manager, and precisely to the points of what you just mentioned were the discussion items that we had, at least with EDC. I was involved with the mayor. And I think, I won't speak for you, mayor, but we made some strides in that meeting. We are hoping to plan a workshop where there could be further learning and education on the council's part, because there were certain things within that meeting that we also learned in that discussion. So, the return on investment is a very important piece of it, and I think with economic development, there's always this kind of, how do you measure it? You know, how do you know that it's impacting? And how do we know, as a city, we're getting the best of it? So, there's areas that, as a city, we still need to further grow within our internal systems as well. But I think that we're already on that direction with the mayor, and I had that discussion with EDC, and I know that the mayor is very much in tune and communication with GSEC. So, we could, if you're interested in that workshop, that's the next thing that we're heading. Mayor, do you have anything to add to that discussion?
No, essentially, just what you were saying. We have the same exact concerns you did, that the ROI is a big deal. We received some good answers. I have a difficult time wrapping my head around it, too. I want to be able to drive down the street and point to a business that was here because of that $52,000 investment. And a lot of it is the communication back and forth. Also, we did get what we paid for from our local EDC, which is to be involved with the SEDS document. However, we do have the option to do à la carte services, if you will. And I think that may have been, it has been underutilized so far. We have a potential to grow and expand versus what that would add up to versus hiring a completely different position with benefits for our economic development efforts. GSEC is important for us to be a part of their regional conversation, because some folks who might work in a place located not in Uba City, a lot of them, or some of them at least, live here, which the city really benefits from that as well. So, the regional conversation, we get, some of the flow comes into the city that way, but as Grace said, it's very difficult to measure. We have a renewed enthusiasm for continuing deeper conversations, which is the impetus for the workshop that we had mentioned, to leverage our membership to the full extent possible to see some results. And yet, while we do have efforts with business retention and expansion, that role primarily falls on the local, and then regionally, being part of the regional conversation, regional efforts was where GSEC falls in. So, I am looking forward to folks from our local EDC coming and speaking with staff in City Hall to inform them what the options are, what services they provide, and what can we do to further enhance our efforts. I'm comfortable with going one more lap around the calendar, at least, to put forth those renewed efforts that we've discussed already, to see what we can do. But it is, even it is, I don't want to say only $52,000, but in the bigger picture, when we talk millions in some projects, it's a rather economical investment, but we do need to still make sure, and we have the responsibility, making sure we're getting a return on that investment. So, hopefully, that helps.
Did you have anything?
No. Through the mayor. You know, listening to the recent two presentations from both, you know, GSEC and the EDC, all of you guys, starting with the vice mayor, is on point, but if we're going to move this forward, we have to clearly define what the expectations are. And the return on investment, as much as GSEC provides it, as much as Ms. Stranix from EDC provides it, they're running big numbers through a calculation that really, it's a wag for better guess, because it is what it is. One of the things, like you mentioned with GSEC, and I'm not against GSEC, I'm not against the EDC, there just needs to be clear expectations. But like GSEC was talking about, the money brought back to this economy, the same problem that affects that report from GSEC is the same problem that we find in some of our budgetary items, that why we've had, you know, budget concerns over the years, is all built upon economic growth, housing growth, business growth. And prior to us becoming on this council, we went through at least a four- to six-year period of no growth, literally. We know the housing starts had come to a dismal stop. We know that businesses, for a lot of, there hadn't been a lot of those built. And so, you have one part of that economic equation that wasn't working, but yet, they want to show the ROI based upon it was working, when you get to the underlying things. Personally, I invite the EDC to come in. I'd like GSEC to be here, and we need to kind of have that open and frank dialogue about what the expectations are. Because if the GSEC is bringing business opportunities to the region, I would like for them to be bringing stuff to us for our region, not just Sacramento. And that's going to take engagement by our EDC. And just speaking frank, I'm not against the EDC, but we've seen communication issues when we've had economic workshops with outside consultants coming in. We all witnessed that over at the Senior Citizens Center, I think it was last summer when we were over there. And we've got to work together for the greater good of this community. So, I'm with the vice mayor. I have concerns about both of them. I'm not open, I'm not against not continuing, but if we're going to continue, we have to clearly define those lines and what we expect from the organizations to get these guys working together, because that is clearly the disconnect. And GSEC will say it's EDC, and EDC will say it's GSEC. End of the day, you've got two people that aren't talking, and we're suffering. And so, we've got to get over that. And I think the workshop is great, but during the workshop, I really don't want to hear, "Well, I can do this, I can do that." It needs to be an open, two-way street, so they understand, "We expect this, and we expect that." Because for too long now, we've just basically been directed. So, I like the continued membership, but we have to have clear expectations, because the math is truly flawed.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
I'm hearing a common concern across from the four of us that have talked about it so far. The common concerns is lack of communication, perhaps, clarity of the expectations, and frankly, is the city getting its money's worth? Pretty much three areas. And in those three areas, at least when the mayor and I sat down with Brenda and with our city manager, Diana Langley, we covered those three areas in a pretty clear, frank My view about how that role, the conversation came out, and watching Brenda explain, I sense, in hearing her out on that, and a few other meetings since thereafter, her commitment to the city, to this region, is very strong. It's a strong commitment. I believe there's an opportunity for us to learn, educate ourselves a little bit more, as both of you are saying, and gain that understanding of how these relationships interface. When do they interface, and when don't they? And how do we get the best results for this city for us? One other area that I am concerned is, addition to those three, is that, as a city, we don't have the internal operations to really have that central management to help within those two particular contracts that we have right now, with EDC and GSEC. We have Ben, who's taken over, you know, development services, and we used to have some sort of small economic aspect of our work, but those things are just not in place, and that's some fiscal things that we're figuring out. But I think in that workshop, we could have that even further conversation openly amongst the five of us, with representatives virtually or in person, depending on when we get to that date. But all those very specific things that you just pointed out were the areas that we talked directly. And it wasn't an easy conversation, and it wasn't defensive, it wasn't offensive, it was truly, we want to do best for both sides. EDC wants to do well for Uba City, and Uba City wants to do well for the entire constituency that we serve. Now, with GSEC, I haven't had those conversations. I haven't had that with Barry. I participated in a virtual meeting that we had with the mayor, and the same presentation that Barry had with one of his representatives is pretty much the same conversation in that one meeting, along with our city manager. So, I just want to assure my colleagues here that we have had those very clear, direct conversations, okay? So, the money is important, but the quality of that work and the expectations is even more important, because we want to get the best out of it.
Two points that I would like to add, to echo Councilwoman Espendola's point, what we've heard from both the Uba Sutter EDC, as well as GSEC, is that city staff has not been engaged with either organization in terms of economic development. And so, if we are to go forward with memberships for both, we need to do a renewed effort to have city staff engaged in that process. And so, my second point is, is that I think it's part of a bigger question in terms of economic development. We have an economic development commission within the city that we currently don't have a clear direction for. And so, as council moves forward, I think to answer that question of, where does the city want to go with economic development? What do we want to do with our economic development commission? What's our role with the Uba Sutter EDC and GSEC? Those warrant a lot of discussion. And so, I appreciate the vice mayor's comments about the need to go back and kind of reassess and reevaluate. That's true. But, you know, the bigger picture of, how do these all play together? What is our role? How do we support it? And then also, at the council level, we have the representatives to the boards, but really, the day-to-day really comes down to staff being available to field questions and to be able to provide the support to all of those, the commissions and GSEC.
Well said. Thank you very much. All right. Any commentary, sir? Nothing?
Through the mayor, I just want to support exactly what city manager Diana Langley said. It really comes down to our own internal need for operations and staffing as well. And not to add anything else to Ben's plate, because he's pretty full, but I don't know how we're going to do that, but we're all going to need to come up with somehow to help with this area. Thank you.
Final comment for me is, a long journey with the city in regards to economic development as a department head, where we had the EDC, we didn't have the EDC, we had our own economic development person. I have not seen really any of those result in any real concrete, solid returns on investment. I think that they're all helpful, and I'm certainly not trying to throw shade on any of those, but I do appreciate the interim city manager's comments about trying to get at this whole thing and take a look at it and make sure that whatever it is we're doing, whatever money we're spending, we're doing so efficiently and effectively. Because the topic of economic development, to me, includes business retention as much as business attraction. And I do believe that, especially in these COVID times, this is something that should rise, and I do believe it's in one of our priorities, being business-friendly. But I do think it's something that, again, as we move slowly away from, and hopefully towards, looking at where we're going to be in September with the budget workshop, that we need to refocus on economic development. It's going to be incredibly important to the city in the years to come.
I would add, a base of that would be some infrastructure expansion, figure out a way to do that. That'll allow us to be more attractive for these business locates. Even if you gave you a blank check or something, a really nice industrial park eventually somewhere, somehow, would be nice. But right now, we have on the table an action item to continue our membership in the Greater Sacramento Economic Council. If anybody would care to make a motion on that, one way or the other?
I move to continue the membership.
All right.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to continue our membership with GSEC. That's a year-long membership, Diana?
Yes.
One year, for one year, on the, you know, presumption that we are going to continue this conversation, similar to what Councilwoman Espendola explained.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
How soon, Ms. Langley, do you think we can have a workshop together with these two agencies? Because before I vote, I would hate to vote yes for something, and we not be able to get these two agencies together till February or March, virtually or not. And I know I'm asking you to speak for them, but I apologize. I mean, is it something that we can try to happen in the next month?
So, our discussion with Brenda Stranix was to first start with her having meetings with staff internally, so that staff understands what the EDC has to provide in terms of resources. And then, a follow-up discussion with that related to the workshop was to actually schedule it once the new city manager's onboard. And so, we're bringing the new city manager into the conversations related to it. And so, based upon where we are at the very early stages of the recruitment, most likely, if council were to go that direction, it would be early next year for the workshop. And that seemed to align okay with Brenda's schedule, just because of all the COVID-related items that the EDC is dealing with right now. Not to say that they might not still be dealing with that, then hopefully not, but that would give time to prepare. In terms of GSEC, we have not talked to them about a workshop. As Councilwoman Espendola and Mayor Harris indicated, they did have a phone call with those two council members, but we could talk to them about having a workshop sooner.
Just as one of the five, I would like to see that workshop not be belated to early next year, because we basically just wasted half a year again of a membership. I think it would behoove us if we start with these organizations, meeting with staff, and then likewise, meeting with the council, so that when the new city manager gets here, it's not, "We're expecting the city manager to understand and come back our way. We are already hitting the ground running." And I personally, if we're going to wait six, seven months, it's a no-starter for me. I would like to have meetings with us, with these agencies, sooner than better. We don't have to wait on the new city manager to get an understanding ourselves and set some expectations, since we set the policies. So, just one of five, that would be my input. So, I ask the question of the council, and Mr. Attorney, tell me if I'm out of order here, but my vote is going to be based upon how soon we can set up these meetings. And because if they're going to be six, seven months down the line, to me, it's a waste of one year's funds. If we can do it in the next couple of months, I'm all for it, because we're not wasting six or seven months. Is there any way to get an answer to that, Mr. Attorney?
He's muted.
You're muted.
You're muted.
Still muted.
No, he says he's not. He's not showing muted.
Yeah, you're still muted.
Hold on, we got our computer guru here. Hold on. While we're waiting for Shannon, can I make a comment? How about we just table this till the next meeting? That way, Diana can maybe give us some information, when we can have a meeting with the Greater Sacramento group. Yeah.
I'm not muted in a voice.
Oh, there you go.
There you go. You're back.
You're back.
Welcome back.
So, you can hear me now, right?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic, great. I don't even know what happened. Thank you, Councilmember Shaw, for your question. I don't know that you can approve something tonight and contingentally approve upon something happening within 60 days, unless it's not necessary for us to approve, give your final approval for the $50,000. So, for example, you would say, "Hey, this is a contingent upon them doing X, Y, and Z within the next 60 days, but if it doesn't occur, no payment shall be made until that occurs in 60 days." You could do it that way.
Per Councilman Cardoza's suggestion, is it, are we under a time constraint to renew with GSEC?
I'm sure they would be understanding council's requests. They've been understanding in terms of, you know, deferring it to this point in time, because we requested that Barry do a presentation related to the return on investment, which he did at the last meeting. And so, then council requested to bring forward the membership for consideration. And so, I would follow up with Mr. Broome in terms of the request for a council workshop within the next 60 days.
I would agree with Councilman Cardoza. If there's a possibility of giving you a little time to work with Mr. Broome, figure out if you could accommodate Councilman Shaw's request. I'm okay with that, as long as we're not placing the agreement in harm's way.
I think it is important to get a plan in place, assuming the better COVID's really putting a damper on things, as far as perhaps moving forward with some of the things in that plan. When you do speak with Mr. Broome, Diana, I'm interested in knowing some bullet points, directly ordered bullet points of a plan that he would recommend, what they can do. We already have the numbers. We already have all of that. We have the report. I would like to know, directing to the point, this is, if he is willing to do it, a plan in place. If he was us, how would he use him?
Right. And one of the things that, at his presentation, one of the slides he didn't get to was, there was a slide in terms of what they need from the city.
Okay.
And so, part of that was, they need a staff member to participate in the meetings. They need a staff contact to be able to reach out to, to discuss projects. And so, if we schedule a workshop, I need to understand what council's goal is with that workshop, and then also expect Mr. Broome to provide expectations of the city in terms of how we're going to participate. And, you know, recognizing the resources that we have, I just want to make sure that council's aware that there will be asks of the city.
So, through the mayor, if I may, given that, and if fiscally, we're not able to provide that, is he basically saying he's not interested in working with us?
He'll continue to work with us. I would say, we would get out of it what we've been getting.
Okay.
So, in terms of what we've been getting the last few months, I would expect we would continue to get the same level of service, because it would be the same level of effort that the city's put into it. He did have some ideas that he brought up in terms of, you know, looking at, with LDS Temple being here, could you coordinate with Uba College to get a satellite campus of Brigham Young? He did have some specific things that he discussed. In terms of projects that come forward within the Sacramento regional area, both the Uba Sutter EDC and GSEC get those requests for proposals. So, as those proposals come across to the city, we would need to respond in terms of, do we have sites that can meet the criteria? And so, that would require some staff time to be able to respond to that. So, with that, any other questions?
Sure. Yeah, just a quick one to follow up with that, is if Mr. Broome had a suggestion in the discussions you have with him regarding what that staff time would be, that might enable us to better understand what the commitment on the city would be. I don't know what that is, is it a halftime position? Is it a full-time position? Just to figure out whether we can absorb that, or we're going to have to look outside of the organization to, once again, staff a position.
Okay.
Those are important questions for me to have addressed.
Yeah.
And through the mayor, along those same lines, asking what we expect out of them, and that's why I think it's important we get them both together, not at separate times, because we can figure out how all three, us, EDC, and GSEC, all work together. EDC has its ass, GSEC has its ass. We all work together to figure out how it's going to be an interlocking and working wheel. Because at some point, like we alluded to earlier, we've got to fix the communication problems between those two agencies as well, to really make this work, to be worthwhile to continuing the membership in those. So, I think it's key that we have all of us at that workshop, not just one, and then a second one another. We need to all be there.
Is the next meeting too soon for you, Diana?
I don't know. It would depend upon Brenda, and then Barry. So...
I have a public comment from Danielle Casey, who is with GSEC. She's been trying to get our attention. She said she would be happy to meet as soon as possible, and she would love to comment if possible.
And I've got Barry texting me, saying he would love to get on a call right now if we wanted to like him to. I think at this point, we know what we're going to be asking, and he clearly is, too. So, and there's one comment, I can't remember what I was going to add. Oh, the LDS potential satellite campus, just since we brought that up, I did follow up on that, made a couple of calls, and talked with Steve Hammerstrom of our, he was on our city's EDC, and he made a couple of calls. He expressed his opinion.
of calls. He expressed his opinion, made a couple of calls to verify that opinion with some other people, and they're—for right now, they're not interested, because of everything. Everything is going online, and of course, thank COVID. So FYI on that, on that option, anyway.
I—through the mayor, I do support the idea of scheduling the workshop. I mean, that's the idea that we came up with in our meeting. To—I'm—I'm just hearing you out, Councilman Shaw, where we're thinking 90 days, so this is August. I'm just kind of rolling out the dates. Oh, within—oh, 60 days. Okay, thank you. So you're thinking before October? Okay.
Hopefully sometime in September.
September? So probably more than—I—I don't know with EDC, because I know she's really busy with these other grants, but, I mean, the presentation of maybe the end of September, or the first one in October, the workshop, or something in—in between that time, if we don't, you know, on a off day that we don't have a city council, we can schedule a workshop. I mean, I—I—I don't see that Brenda would not be supportive of that in the conversations that we've had with her. So I—I—I support what EDC's doing. They—I've checked with other partners in the community, and they've been able to do quite a bit for them in infrastructure, in other parts of the areas that are future planning act—items of—of what we do. So, I mean, I can—I can—how—how would I—because I started the motion, so would we just...
You can—we can withdraw it, and then we can table it and get an update from Diana in two weeks.
In two weeks?
Or in our first—our next meeting.
Then I—I can support that.
All right.
Are you pulling your motion, then?
Yes, I am.
Mayor Harris.
Oh, yes.
Excuse me. There's one more comment from Danielle Casey with GSAC. She said, "We have not been asked at all regarding a workshop, so this is the first we've heard of the request, but would, of course, be happy to participate in the next month."
Yes, that's very consistent with the way they do business. I think they're—the their last presentation is in their mind, but that's—that's fine. They're usually right on top of them. Barry could—Barry and Danielle both can do it without even preparing. They have a lot of information in their head.
And—
Okay.
Just to clarify, we haven't asked GSAC, so we're having the discussion. That's why they're not—
Not for this yet. We were going to start with the EDC, and they blended that in today, so that's fine.
That's why they didn't know.
They're very accommodating. That's fine. Okay, so the item has been tabled, and thank you very much. Is there anything further from anybody? And I'll just ask before, is there any public comment on this item?
No more received.
Okay. And thank you, Barry and Danielle, for participating.
Through the mayor? Sorry, has the item been tabled, or has it been continued to a time and date certain?
Well, she pulled the motion.
I pulled the motion.
And so we are continuing it until our next meeting, to get an update from our interim city manager.
Okay, and I see enough nods, so it's by—by a claim?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that discussion. It's a good one.